Our Heavenly Father, we stand before you and with gratefulness in our hearts and thankful for the mighty God that you are. We realize the decisions that we will make tonight will affect those that we serve and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance, that as we make these decisions, it will be in the best interests of our citizens and will be pleasing to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilwoman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Thank you. This time I'd like to remind everybody to silence your cell phones and no use while you're in the council chambers. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Okay, the next item is consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to discuss any items separately?
Mr. Mayor, if not, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Most and second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. Next item is proclamation. Mayor Ed DeGerris will present a proclamation in the honor of Councilman Lloyd Matthews. You can meet me up at the podium, please.
Lloyd Matthews is an amazing man. He, I called him a lot my first year as a councilman, probably worried him to death, but I admired him for his insight, telling me what to do, how to do it, what he looked, the way he looked at things, and over the next few years, I called him just as much. And admiration just kept growing. A lot of times when that happens and you put somebody on a pedestal, they'll fall. But Mr. Matthews, you didn't have to worry about that, he was only nowhere but up. We, you talk to him on the phone, maybe 20 or 30 minutes. You get talked about life experiences, he'd always mention Job Corps and Sears, boys, but and we'd get to the item that we were going to discuss when we first started talking after a while, and I didn't realize that till later, a lot of times, those experiences he had in Sears and Job Corps and life experiences were a teaching tool that he was using for me on those other items. It was amazing, the talents he had. Lloyd was a very dedicated man, I think, to three things. First is God and his relationship, knowing that he had the current life, and he tried to bring that out every time you talked to anyone and make sure they had the same opportunity, and he'd help them get there if they needed to. His second dedication was to his family. There was always nothing to hide, praises to his wife Laverne, all of his children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And then the third one, his dedication was to any task that he entered. He went out of full steam on everything. I know, shared Lloyd, I visited him before he passed, that my dad had died when I was 13, and that since then, I've had three men that, and you may have stretchy age, a little bit on some of them, that I think would be a great father figure, and Lloyd was one of those men. I have this proclamation that I'd like to read now, if I can make it through it, can we take a deep breath? "Whereas the members of the city council, the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, are always pleased to recognize those individuals who bring credit upon themselves and upon the community. And whereas former mayor and councilman Lloyd Matthews resigned from the city council on January the 6th, having served the community for 12 years in the At-Large Ward, where he loved visiting with many folks he came in contact with and sharing his dreams of growth with the City of Poplar Bluff. Whereas Lloyd was a very family-oriented man, had been married to his wife Laverne for 60 years, with whom he had three children, Bill and Mindy Matthews of Poplar Bluff, Steve and Julian Matthews of St. Louis, Patty and Sean Haggerty of Stewartsville, Minnesota, along with 10 grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Whereas Lloyd was a man of great faith and a member of the First Christian Church, served in the United States Navy during the Korean conflict, and had a bachelor's science degree in education, and loved working with the youth in our community, those retired from being old Job Corps and the Sears Youth Center, was involved at the Butler County Community Resource Council, served on the Northside Nutrition Center Board, Simo Area Agency of Aging Board, and the Boys and Girls of the Corps. And whereas Lloyd was also an avid outdoorsman, who loved hunting and fishing, and shared many of his stories to any that would listen. And Lloyd demonstrated his concern for the welfare and well-being of his fellow citizens by his actions both in his prior life and his life as a public servant, and earned the respect, admiration, and high regard of all whom he had come in contact. And whereas the mayor of the city council is just as proud of Lloyd Matthews for his dedication and commitment during his years of public service to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri and the community. Now therefore, due to a claim by the mayor of the city council, the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, that now whom it expresses its congratulations to the family of Lloyd Matthews, further the city clerk of the City of Poplar Bluff has hereby authorized and directed to sort of buy a copy of this proclamation and to further cause this proclamation to be forever preserved in the official records of the City of Poplar Bluff, claimed this 18th day of February 2014 by the office of the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri. Thank you for sharing Lloyd with us and for giving us a father figure to me at a time when I didn't even realize I did. Thank you."
Mr. Bill Box, general manager of Municipal Utilities and City Cable, will appear before the city council to provide an update on the Southwestern Power Administration Transmission Upgrade.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Southwestern, who is our transmission provider, has informed me that they plan on rebuilding the transmission lines that serve, excuse me, that serve our city. Starting March 1st, Southwestern will take an outage on the Poplar Bluff to Asherville line. Southwestern plans on having this completed by April 1st. During this work, Poplar Bluff will be served radially from the Green Forest to Poplar Bluff line. After work is completed on that line and is returned to service, Southwestern will take an outage on the Green Forest to Poplar Bluff line. Southwestern plans on having this line segment completed by June 1st, and during this work period, Poplar Bluff will be served radially from the Asherville to Poplar Bluff circuit. So during this time of construction, if we have an outage on the trans system, we may not be able to serve the whole town, and if you recall, two years ago, we went through the same process, about the same time, two years ago. We've identified our priority customers, such as hospitals, nursing homes, police, fire stations, water operations, sewer operations, and we'll serve them first. Grocery stores and gas stations will be next, and any remaining power would be provided to the residents in a real ground out. City has plans in place to provide air workers to help Southwestern make repairs dependent upon the damage, and we're not expecting an outage to last for more than six hours during this. Again, we have internal generation here, but we can only serve a portion of the load at that time. So we're planning for the worst, but we're hoping for the best, and if anybody's got a question, we'd be more than happy to answer.
You're going to meet with the industrial customers and let them know?
Already have.
Okay. And we, you know, we just don't have the redundancy that we normally have, so an outage could be a little more severe than it would be normally, and Bill and I talked about, you know, we don't want anybody to panic over the fact that we're still going to be fed. The last time this happened, we had no incidences whatsoever, and we don't expect to this time, but we are going to lose our redundancy, and just want to make sure that the council and the public's aware of that.
We have no control over the weather, but it sounds like we've got all the emergency services covered, so.
And they generally try to perform these during times when loads are starting to reduce and so whether, or slam, we'll probably have, probably have some weather now, but.
Murphy's law.
Yeah.
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Box. Item B, the city council will discuss accepting Shelby Road Phase 1 as a city street.
We have never accepted Shelby Road Phase 1, it's been completed for some time now, and it will be included eventually in our STP program, which is Service Transportation Program, MoDOT helps us with, we actually get funding for some of those, and we just seem need to officially accept Shelby Road as a city street. We've been maintaining it, we've been doing snow removal on it, it's not an issue, we just have not ever officially accepted.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we move item B to the voting session to be held tonight.
Sir.
Most and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will discuss the appointment of the library board and downtown Poplar Bluff Board. We've had just three applicants, and one that was for the library board has already moved out of town, so the other two applicants, which are Kristi Turner and Stephanie Chapman, will need to entertain a motion. Nobody's had any questions, to move this item to the voting session to be held March 3rd.
Move.
Sir.
Most and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will review a request to rezone property from RS3, Central Area Residential, to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, for future commercial development. The applicant is Zozark Holding Company, care of Chris Penderzky, and the property is located at 822 Foley Street. Mr. Abrams.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, Mr. Penderzky owns the property. He actually owns the property to the west of it and has previously put up a building up on that, and he's just expanding his holding, and that's why he's making this request. Right now, it's RS3, Central Area Residential, and it joins his east line of his current C1 Neighborhood Commercial property, adjoins the west line of the crosswind question. And he did rezone that other portion in September of 2009, prior to putting up a building. It is single-family residential, vacant land, vegetated. Mr. Penderzky has done some cleanup on the lot, even though he didn't own it, because that was one of the things the neighbors expressed concern about when we went through the rezoning process on the first one. Surrounding land use to the north, south, and east is single-family residential RS3, and to the west is a commercial, C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Comprehensive plan makes no specific recommendations for this area. It slopes to the south, utilities are available, access would be from Foley Street. Again, the applicant has erected a storage warehouse building to store personal goods and some unused office equipment on the west portion of the property that is already his own C1. His intent is to consolidate his property. Designation of the property as C1 should not compromise the property values of the adjoining residential homes. As already stated, he has done some cleanup prior to approaching us with this. The recommendation from the planning commission and the planning department is that we approve, we recommend approval of this rezoning request with one stipulation. On the previous one that we rezoned, we put a 25-foot green space buffer to the east side of the property, and we would like to take that buffer and move it all the way to the east line of this portion in question, if in fact it is rezoned. So he wouldn't have a buffer in between, you know, his parcels, but he would still have one on the eastern fringe of his property, which would be a 25-foot buffer running the length of his property on the east line, which is where the residential structures are at in that area. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a good use for that property, the building that they have constructed now, is a nice building. Has been cleaned up a little bit to the side, and I think that if it is rezoned, to give them a chance, there's possibility of more tax revenue if they build, if not, they are, it will be cleaned up more, and I just see it as an asset for that area, and would make a motion to move this to the voting session, I believe that would be March 3rd.
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action required items. Bill number 7661. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute an energy management agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and West Star Energy, Inc., for management of the city's power supply contracts.
Move for first reading of number 7661.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Kirby?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute an energy management agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and West Star Energy, Inc., for management of the city's power supply contracts.
Move for second reading, bill number 7661.
Second.
Most and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Kirby?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute an energy management agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and West Star Energy, Inc., for management of the city's power supply contracts.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill 7661 is passed. Bill number 7662, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Smith &amp; Company, Inc., for engineering services in connection with the Drinking Water SRF Phase 3 project.
Move for first reading, bill number 7662.
Second.
Most and second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Kirby?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Smith &amp; Company, Inc., for engineering services in connection with the Drinking Water SRF Phase 3 project.
Move for second reading, bill number 7662. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Kirby?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Smith &amp; Company, Inc., for engineering services in connection with the Drinking Water SRF Phase 3 project.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments?
I have a couple of questions. Can we explain just in a little, a little bit more detail what it is that this job is going to be doing? It's kind of, it's just worded a little... What are we, what are we having Smith &amp; Company do?
Well, there's three different projects. When we passed the bond back in 2008, I believe, we had identified in our facility plan work that we needed done, and the portion that we're to now is, fill me out.
Basically?
Yep.
The project?
Yep.
Is the backup?
Yeah, the backup well, DNR. DNR had, we have a surface water treatment plant, and DNR has written us up that we don't have a backup water source. If there's an oil spill or anything in the river, we're done. So one of them is to have a backup water source, so we would do a, basically a deep well to provide backup water. Not 100% backup water, because that was too costly, but we would still be able to supply water to the city.
So are they just, they're doing, they're doing all of the design work?
That's correct.
With this?
That's correct.
Okay. Just curious. I just wanted to do a little more detail.
There's actually three projects.
Yeah, what was the other project?
Crypto-spiridium.
Okay. Crypto-spiridium, there again, DNR required us to come into compliance with the log two or log four removal, and so that's a process that DNR required us to do, so again, we put that in with the SRF projects, and I forget the last one.
Billy Cobb, Smith &amp; Company, 901 Vine Street, the east side water line.
Okay. And the last one, we have money left over, and on the east side, we have two-inch water mains, been that way for 100 years probably, and we're replacing those with six-inch mains to provide better water source to the east side.
All right, thank you, that clarified some things.
And I don't want to complicate this, but the well will actually be able to use in periods of high turbidity, too, won't we, and be able to reduce our chemical usage, so it'll be a money saver for us also when that river gets up and muddy as it does every spring and every fall.
How did we choose Smith &amp; Company to do the, to do this work? Did we, was this just the rating at the beginning of the year, and we just chose them to work on this particular project? Because I didn't see where other, other companies had the chance to.
Yeah, every, every January, I send out request forms to, this year, Horner and Schifflin, I know, submitted one, to six or seven different engineering firms. We review those and see who is most suited for those projects. Smith &amp; Company's been working for the city since the mid-'60s, I guess, and generally, they have as good a understanding, as you just witnessed of our system, as we do in most cases. So, yeah, they're selected, but each year, by state statute, each year, we have to send out a request for qualifications, I do that on an annual basis, and then we select based on their ability to do the job.
Who selects? The committee?
The committee selects, in some cases, we went through the same process more formally with the Shelby Road, Three Rivers Interest and Oak Grove Road projects, where we had a committee, but, yeah, we wind up.
And who picks, who picks the committee?
No, there's no committee pick.
Okay.
The council winds up approving that.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I just missed that one. Okay. You've clarified things for me, I appreciate it.
The backup well is a good thing. Right now, we've, I've worried about that for several years of not, if any chemical spill anywhere from the train tracks north of us gets into the river, we have, we have some problems.
We brought trouble on that river.
Yeah, yeah.
One year, well, a few years back, it got so low that we almost couldn't pump it out a few years back.
And that, we've, we've addressed that, too, with this same project, Phase 2, I think, with a portion of that, so.
Yeah, if you go over there, it's a new, whole new concept on a river. If you look at that, with the work they've done, it's, I think, it was a person's construction, I believe, that might have done it, but they've done a good job, it was a big project to make that happen, but also, now with the well process coming, I think, you know, we're kind of preparing for the, for a potential problem.
And I guess, as you point out, I think most of the council understands that, but we're selecting Smith &amp; Company for that process right now, the council is, so if you've got somebody else in mind, or.
Oh, I just kind of would like to have all of the companies around be able to maybe come and talk to us, and just so that we, so that we could see them for ourselves, and I don't know if that's even something we could do, but I'd like everyone to have an opportunity.
If the council would like to do it, you don't bid engineering services.
That's right, yeah.
State statute doesn't allow you to do that.
But what my, what I would like to see is, when, when they have to compete against each other, then, you know, the, which I'm not saying that Smith &amp; Company, I think Smith &amp; Company does a great job, but when you compete, you save money, that's, there's more value to it, so I just would like to see them, I don't know, have more opportunity.
Well, engineering services, there's a sliding scale that is, that is provided, that any time anybody gets outside of that scale, then we, we have a checklist that we can look back and say, how come you're outside of that? That always comes to council, if that's the case, but generally, you base on qualifications as opposed to.
And who's rating them? That's kind of, I mean, who is rating the firms?
We are selecting Smith &amp; Company tonight, so if you have a problem with them, as I said, we're not selecting the council, they're selecting them, not if you have a problem with them.
Well, there wasn't any other option coming up, there was, we had no other options, we just had Smith &amp; Company.
On an annual basis, we take a look, and actually do more than we have to do, but they wind up being who we wind up selecting. When I say who, it's who I present to council, just as it's going on tonight, so if you all have a problem with Smith &amp; Company and the work they do, then.
It's already out here, I'm fine with it, but in the future, I mean, we might, we might, I mean, it's already here, we've got the work and every.
It is not, there's an agreement that you all are going to approve or not approve tonight, so it's not already out there. If you'd prefer to look at another firm, I can certainly go back and bring you other qualification, we've got them on file over there right now.
Well, it's up to the rest of the individuals, I don't know if we want to see if any other companies are interested in going for that job or not.
Generally, if you're not satisfied with the work that's being provided, that's what we would do, otherwise, like I say, the price is a consideration, that there's a scale, and I have it on file over there also, if they get outside those limits, then we say, whoa, wait a minute, as long as they're within those limits, and it's based on sur projects, airport projects, water projects, paving projects, I know Bobby's familiar with it, and any time they get outside those limits, we, we talk to them about it. But again, you're going through that process tonight, and if you would prefer to see.
That's why I'm just bringing up the, bringing up the questions.
Well, I'm not sure what the question was.
I don't think anyone else would, on the council, I don't know if anyone else is interested in even looking to see if any other firms are, are interested in the work, but I just want to make sure everyone has a fair chance.
All six or seven firms that I have in those files in there are interested in the work.
So maybe we should give one of them a chance.
And that's what we're doing tonight.
Maybe we should give a different one a chance, we're always using the same one.
We're using Horner and Schifflin to be here tonight on another project.
Exactly. I mean, they're, they're used to the, to what we're doing, I mean, why not give them a shot at it? Used in the same firm every single time.
Let me answer some of that. So this is the third phase of the SRF projects. Smith &amp; Company did Phase 1.
Right.
Smith &amp; Company did Phase 2. They're already familiar with the projects. They're also already familiar with the city's system. Some of the other engineers have never worked for the city in this capacity.
But they're never given a chance to work for the city?
Well, they are, just not on these projects, no.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with moving forward on what we have now in front of us, but, I mean, I'd like to see some of the other ones get a chance, is what I'm trying to say.
I get it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, and her comments, I think she's finished with them.
I'm done.
Okay. So that's for roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7662 is passed. Bill number 7663, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting Shelby Road Phase 1 as a city street.
Move for first reading of 7663.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Kirby?
In ordinance accepting Shelby Road Phase 1 as a dedicated street in the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Most and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Kirby?
In ordinance accepting Shelby Road Phase 1 as a dedicated street in the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
For adoption.
Second.
Most and second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7663 is adopted. Item double D, the city council, the City of Poplar Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open meeting clause, section 610.021.1, 02, 03, 09, 011, 012, 013, 014, revised statutes, Missouri.
Mayor, I make a motion, we move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Most and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Bagby?
I have a new date for Buff Up the Bluff, but Dennis has left, and I don't recall exactly what that date is, but we have another meeting prior to then, so I'll get you that information. By the way, Shelby Road Phase 1 was done by Schulson Company Engineering, and a great job on it, too.
It gets used a lot.
It does. Legislative conference was last week, I know, Councilwoman Pearson, Mayor Proton McVeigh, Mayor DeGerris, Councilman Smith, all attended that. I was able to go up and visit with legislators just a little bit, so I trust it was a successful meeting and proud that. was a successful meeting, and proud that those of you who could were able to attend.
I'd like to add, I wasn't there Friday night, but the Darryl Worley concert was a huge success. Everybody I've talked to, it said he put on a good show, and it was a good use for the Coliseum.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to recognize that we lost two longtime business people in our community this week. Jewel Botkin, that had Hayden's for many, many years, passed away, and Nathan Stout, that had Atlas Moving and Mini Storage, will be greatly missed, they were assets to our community. I want to have our prayers with their families.
Mr. Mayor, I sent my research to all the council just before the meeting for the council videos. I did some research on transparency across the state, and I just provided that to everyone in email, and if you want, have any questions, just let me know.
Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn, about five-minute recess, then we'll turn to the closed meeting.